Susan, Jake, how are you?
Good.
Good, thanks.
Good to you. You look like you've had a long day.
It's kind of long, one of those. I remember eating, it might have been yesterday.
That's why you have such a good figure.
Did you go home?
I haven't.
Did you get to sleep?
I tried to, yeah, I usually go to lunch.
He just went to the executive showers.
Susan, that's in your packet already. Those planted, I'm so sorry.
Oh, there is one in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I doubt myself. Okay.
I edited the, when we passed it last time. Councilmember Garnett had some edits, so it should be the edited version.
So now, okay, I better update my packet then.
All right, well, Councilmember Snell is out of town. Councilmember Adams, have you heard anything from him?
I have not.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and, ready? Go ahead and get started with our special city council member training this evening. We appreciate all three of you in attendance, one of yous on the agenda, but the first item that we have that we're beginning this special 6:00 PM city council meeting for is open meeting law and rules of procedure training. A couple of weeks ago, at one of our city council meetings, the city council adopted a new rules of procedure, and so we have asked David Church, who also serves as legal counsel for the Utah League of Cities and Towns, has said that he is willing to come and take the next hour of our time to, for two things, to train the council on the open meeting law and open the Public Meetings Act, and then to also train the council on our new rules of procedure. So with that, Mr. Church.
Thank you for the invite. An hour's a long time. See if there's that much information, that many questions.
Yeah. You can take as much as you'd like.
Well, I wanted to have permission to take as little as I'd like.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, either way.
Let's start with the Open Public Meetings Act information. As you know, annually, every board, every public body is required to be trained. This is something that the legislature put in the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. It is a requirement that the chair of any public body arrange for some sort of training each year for that public body on the requirements of the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. So theoretically, this council is trained every year, and I know your auditor checks on things like that, but every other public body that you may have in the city, like your planning commission, or any official committees or commissions, are receiving some training at least once a year on the requirements of the Open and Public Meetings Act. One of the problems with having it annual is that there's so little turnover on councils, and you run four-year terms and two-year terms. I don't know what good the annual training does, other than just be repetitious. But the legislature does make some changes each year in the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act that it's interesting to be aware of. So I'm going to start just off, right off the top with the Open and Public Meetings Act stuff, to talk about the one change that they made this last year that does affect all public bodies, including city councils. It is a change that has thrilled some recorders and others. As you recall, the Open and Public Meetings Act requires minutes be taken. It is the law that says what your substance your minutes have to contain. Prior to this last change, the act specifically required that your written minutes contain a substance of all statements made by members of the body when they talk. And so your minutes would, then weren't required to have a transcript, but were required to have at least something, a summary, that contained the substance of all comments. Some public bodies at the state level, the people who take those kind of minutes and that kind of thing, felt that that was a real burden, and so they lobbied the legislature. And we now may, rather than do that, have the substance of the minutes, you now can, if you wanted, have your minutes contain a link to a recording of the substance, instead of the substance. And if you provide that link and keep the recording, in theory, people could look up your minutes, not have the substance there, see the link, click on the link, and listen to the recording. Now, that has thrilled a lot of recorders, because they don't have to type out everything and have enough. Let me tell you why I think that's a terrible idea.
He said that also, Will.
As you know, unlike some bodies, the public bodies, our minutes are permanent records, which means we keep them forever. I don't know how those of us who appreciate the ability to go back and look at the minutes of Kaysville from 1910 or 1890 and read those, appreciate the substance of those minutes. I don't know how, in the future, that's going to be preserved if we use this new section. I know in my office, in a basement somewhere, I still have six-inch floppy disks. I don't have a machine that it goes in. I still have those three-and-a-quarter-inch things. I don't know how you're going to, if you choose that route, how you're going to preserve the record forever. I know how to do it if we have these recorders type it up and put it on paper, put it in a book, and stick it in the office. But that is an option the legislature's given you. If you desire to have your minutes that way, your recorders can now type out, not type out the substance of these long speeches we all make when you guys speak, but just have a link and have the recording on the website, and people can click on it and hear it. Any questions about that change? You'll have to decide on how you want to do it. You can, I know the recorders will all want to not do that, because it saves a lot of time. As you know, some of these minutes can get very, very long, and this is a way that they can be shortened a great deal on the printed minutes. With that change, let me just remind you what the Open and Public Meetings Act, the very basic part of it is. The Open and Public Meetings Act does two main things, both of which are aimed towards what we now call transparency, you know, the public's right to know, and are aimed towards preserving the history of a community. The two things that the act does is it gives, makes, creates the legal requirement that your meetings be open to the public. It creates the availability for the public to come and watch you meet. It creates the minimum standard by which you will allow the public to participate by watching you meet in your meetings. Now, that minimum standard is this. It says that all meetings are open to the public. It then defines meeting for you. A meeting is the convening of the public body by the person who has authority to convene the meeting, for the purposes for which the public body is created. So not every gathering of your group would be a meeting. But if you are convened for city council purposes, it is by definition a meeting. Now, public body is defined also in the act. It is clear that a city council is a public body. There's never any question about that. Public body is defined as a body that consists of two or more persons, that is officially created by statute, constitution, resolution, that is supported by public funds, or has the ability to disperse public funds, and that has the power to make decisions on the public's business. So you are a public body. There is no way that you can get together or be convened as a city council where the law does not require it to be a public meeting. There are ways in which you can close portions of the public meeting from the public, but there is no way to ever start a meeting that doesn't start as a public meeting. The way you make it a public meeting, the way you allow the public to participate in your meeting, is by providing an appropriate notice of the meeting, which is, the minimum requirements are very minimal. An appropriate notice of the meeting has to contain an agenda of the meeting, the date, time, and place of the meeting. Has to be prepared at least 24 hours before the meeting. Has to be posted at the place of the meeting, posted on the state public meeting notice website, and a copy of that sent to your news media outlets. You can give more notice than that if you'd like, but you cannot give less notice, except in an emergency. An emergency is defined to mean floods, waters are rising, the fire's burning, a sinkhole in the road has appeared. It doesn't mean we forgot to put something on the agenda. Most cities, most city councils will sit through their full term and never have to hold an emergency meeting. It would be a very rare thing to have to hold an emergency meeting. The agenda is also defined in the act to, as to what the minimum is that needs to be in the agenda. The agenda must be specific enough that people can recognize what you plan to discuss and decide on, and it's required in the act that it be listed by items. So you could not say, for example, on an agenda, "City will consider various ordinances that they may or may not pass, that concern various projects in the city that may have been discussed in future, in past times, or may not have," you know, as item one. You've got to have items separated out by item. Now, there's no requirement of any minimum number of things on an agenda. There's no requirement of any particular order on the agenda. You can do whatever you want on that. The requirement in the law is that the agenda have specific details and be have separate items listed for those agendas. If, in fact, you failed to notice of the meeting properly, if you take any action that is not on a, properly on an agenda, that action may not necessarily be void, but it is what the judges and the lawyers refer to as being voidable. That means that if you have a procedural error in your noticing, your calling to the meeting, your agenda, and you pass something, and someone challenges that within 90 days from the meeting, and their challenge is successful, then the matter is void. If no one ever challenges it, then it's not void. So in other words, you can't have someone get elected, come in, say, "I never liked that, I've looked back a year ago, and I think they've misnoticed it," so we don't have to follow that ordinance. Now, let me just say, on land use matters, land use ordinances, that void and voidable stuff can create another problem for you. There have been cases in both federal and state courts where people have challenged a zoning ordinance that was passed years ago, and the city could not show from their minutes, their ordinances, their records, that the ordinance had ever been passed at all, and judges have thrown that out. Now, that's not an open meetings issue. That's an issue of record keeping. I was involved in a case, for example, down in Sand Creek County, where the city could not produce the zoning map that had been adopted. Now, there was one on the wall. There was reference to one in the minutes and ordinances. There were lots of copies floating around that may or may not have been, but they couldn't produce an ordinance and an official map that had ever been adopted and signed, even though everybody thinks there was one at some time. I was involved in another case up north, where the small city could not find their zoning ordinance at all, couldn't find their minutes. They had a book that said zoning ordinance. They couldn't prove to the judge that they had ever passed the ordinance. That's a different issue. That's not an open meetings issue. In those cases, the issue wasn't, ordinance wasn't properly on the agenda. Those cases was, was the ordinance was never passed. Show me a signed copy of the ordinance. As your records officer knows, ordinances are to be kept forever. You know, they're permanent records as well on the retention schedule. Even repealed ordinances are kept forever. So in theory, someone in those cities, they should have been able to open a book and say, "Yeah, here's the day we passed the ordinance, here's the ordinance we passed, here's a printed copy that we've been handing out to people for years." All they could do in those cases would find the printed copy, they could never prove they actually adopted it. All right, if you, we start from an open meeting. If you want to close a portion of the Open Meetings Act, the open meeting, you can, but only for very specific purposes, and only after following very specific procedures. First, as I said, the meeting has to be in open session before you can close it. Second, you need a motion to close on the record that identifies the purposes for which you're going to close the meeting. Those purposes must be one of the listed available purposes set out in the state statute. Then you need a two-thirds vote of the members present to close the meeting. If you don't have all three of those things, you can't close the meeting. The purposes laid out in the state statute are intended to be limiting, not descriptive. By that I mean, you may close the meeting for those things and those things only, not things that are like those things. They're not descriptions of the purposes for which you can close the meeting. They are the things for which you can close a meeting. If it's not in the list, you can't close the meeting for it. There are lots of people who would like to say, "Well, it's close to that. The same public policy is served, the same kind of things, there are benefits and burdens are with it, so we ought to be able to do it." But you can't. It is a list. So for example, you may now close a meeting to talk about a person's character, competency, mental, physical health. You may close a meeting to talk about strategy on pending and imminent litigation. You may close a meeting to talk about strategy when it concerns the purchase or sale of real property by the city, when it's necessary to discuss in your closed session things like what you will pay, the appraisals, the bargaining. Now, that third part thing right there is very much like strategy on, say, signing a contract with a, with a construction company, or strategy on bargaining on an economic development thing, or strategy on bargaining on a, on a, a land development agreement. And so many communities I talked to say, "Well, this is a lot like that. We need to be able to discuss those things in private. How can we negotiate a property rights agreement in public?" Well, it's not strategy on the purchase or sale of property. It's not strategy on pending or imminent litigation. And so you can't do that. If we want to be able to do that, we need to lobby the legislature to allow us to add that to the list, and perhaps they will. A lot of people have thought that, that, at least for smaller communities, where the city council is heavily involved in negotiating certain contracts and things, that that ought to be an option, but it is not. We may close the meeting to talk about pending criminal investigations, the deployment of security devices, and our strategy on collective bargaining. Now, there's a list of other things that don't involve cities and towns that they could be closed for, and there are some things that the legislature has now listed that meetings must be closed for. None of those involve cities and towns. Your list of things are things that you may close the meeting for. There is no requirement that you actually close the meeting. It's a permissive right to vote and close. You could do all of these things in an open meeting, but obviously, the public policy behind, behind closing the meetings then wouldn't be met. Any questions about those?
Yeah, hey, just one question. In a closed meeting, do you have to tape them, or is that just an option that the city decides?
No. And I'm glad you asked that, because as I said, the Open and Public Meetings Act indicates what kind of minutes you have to take. It also indicates that all public meetings will be recorded, including closed meetings, with the limited exception that if you're discussing a person's character, or competency, mental, physical health, or the deployment of security devices, you can dispense with the tape, and the chair of the meeting, the presiding officer, can just sign an affidavit saying, "That's all that we discussed." Now, the purpose of taking, taping a closed meeting is for, so that the ability of the public to enforce and check up on you. The tape is a protected document, and if someone believes that you violated the Open and Public Meetings Act by discussing things in a closed session that should not be discussed in a closed session, they have the right to have a district court judge review the recording, and the district court will make public any information on the recording that isn't appropriate under the Open and Public Meetings Act. Now, the policy underlying not recording, there was limited things like the deployment of security devices, and talking about a person's character or competency are these. First, on the deployment of security devices, who would want a recording around that had the code, the combination to the safe, or the code to the door, or things like that? And on the, talking about a person's character or competency, people who serve on public bodies convince the legislature that just the presence of a recording device inhibited candid conversation and comments when it dealt with a person's personal information, like character or competency, because the experience of most is that even though those are protected documents, shouldn't be listened to by the public. They have to be kept by some staff member somewhere. They have to be retained. There's the temptation to listen to it, and a lot of that information, it seems, people would, might get out, and so members of public bodies convince the legislature that just having a recording device in front of them would keep them from sitting in those meetings where they had to talk about somebody's character or competency. But other than that, yes, they are recorded. The recordings are classified as protected documents under the Government Records Access and Management Act. Protected is interesting in that, under the, that act, there's a presumption that protected documents can become public documents when the purpose for the protection is over with, and there are procedures for unprotected protected documents. So in theory, there comes a time when the recording of your closed meeting no longer needs to be private information, and could become public information for the purpose of transparency, and historians, and whatever else you might need. I mean, after the land transaction's done with, how do you justify keeping your strategy secret from the public? After the litigation is over, what difference does it make what your strategy discussion was? Now, it makes, still makes people nervous to think that sometime in the future, some future city council may say, "I vote we take the protection off that recording, let's make that a public document," but in theory, it could happen, because it is a protected document, not a private document or controlled document. And protected means that there is the potential for it to become public. Any question about that? Does that answer your question, Larry? Now, back on the recordings, the legislature is concerned about how public our recordings are, and so it has required us to make the recording of a meeting such as this available to the public within three days from the meeting. The legislature is concerned about how available our written minutes are, and so within 30 days from this meeting, you, your recorder has to have pending minutes available to the public. Pending means minutes that haven't been approved by you yet. Pending minutes mean those minutes that you're editing, that you're reviewing, but there's a 30-day outline, limitation on that. And those approved minutes have to be posted on the safe website and available to public within three days from their approval. Approval is defined by you and your own policies and procedures. Theoretically, you have a process adopted by either resolution or ordinance that establishes when minutes change from pending to approved. Now, most councils used to have them, the next, the last council minute, the pending minutes on their agenda, and they, some formal vote, and then they're approved. That's a common way of doing it. That's not a bad way of doing it. I don't know, I'm assuming that's the way you do it, that you have the meeting. Other cities have other ways of doing it. It could be, there are a handful of places where the, where the recorders circulate pending minutes to the council members, and if no one requests changes, they automatically become approved minutes at a certain time, and it never appears on the next agenda. If someone requests changes, they put it on the agenda to discuss the changes with the whole body. And that's, just as, as long as you've got an established way that they become approved, so that everybody knows when pending changes to final. Because once it's final, it's got to be posted on the state public meeting website and available to the public as approved minutes and kept forever. Any questions about your obligation on minutes and recordings? Okay, let's talk about procedures then for the meetings. The, another section of state law, not the Open and Public Meetings Act, but the municipal code section, requires two of your public bodies to actually adopt rules of procedure and order. Those public bodies are the city council and the planning commission. All other public bodies you have, don't have to adopt rules unless they want to. But the legislature has put a requirement in state law that you adopt rules of procedure and order for your council. It does not say what those rules and procedures need to be. It does say that they need to be just rules of procedure and order for the council, and it does require that a copy of those be available at the place of the meeting for the public to look at during the time of the meeting. So you see all sorts then of parliamentary or meeting procedures that have been adopted by various councils, running from very formal ones, like Robert's Rules of Order, to very informal ones, where just one paragraph rules that say, "We'll treat each other nicely, and we're just going to sit around and chat about these items until they're all done." Any of those would meet the minimum requirements of law, as long as they meet your purpose. Now, earlier this year, the mayor and, and your city manager asked me to edit and draft some rules of procedure to order, to suggest to you, dealing with some issues that you might have, because you wanted to get more formal rather than less formal. So I did that, and I'm, I've been told by the mayor that you adopted those, and that's what we're going to be training on, the way they are. So I hope I have the final copy in front of me that you adopted, but if I don't, you can change. Let me just start by talking about the, these rules that were written that you've adopted. They basically came from me originally. I created these as kind of, when the legislature required that, along with some other possible rules, as suggestions, because I got a lot of calls from cities and said, "What do we do about rules?" And most of them didn't want to go with Robert's Rules of Order, the way the county council does, for example, or Salt Lake City Council, or those, because for two reasons. One, Robert's Rules of Order is very technical and very complicated, and the other is, it's so difficult to make a copy available for the public. You know, you have a book, and you have it there, and most of us have never followed Robert's Rules of Order, except when we were in high school in a debate class, and may have taken that, and then only the nerds did that, you know. The, and so these are, these were my attempt to add some formality, be similar to what most people were doing, and also incorporate the minimum provisions required by state law, dealing with agendas, minimum amount of vote, and that type of thing from other sections of state law. So that's what I did. Let me just say, the purpose of all rules of procedure order, I sum up this way. The purpose is twofold. It is so that the majority on a council can get their way, and the minority can have their say. That's the whole purpose of Rules of Order, to preserve the rights of the minority on any issue, to at least have input, but also preserve the rights of the majority on the council to get something done. council to get something done, passed, and finished. To avoid the filibuster forever, but also to avoid having the majority say, the tyranny of the majority by saying, "We know we have the votes. We don't have to listen to you." So, that's the purpose behind all rules of orders, to balance those competing efforts. Everyone has a right to have their say. Not everyone has a right to get their way. So, that's what the, the way these were written. I've got them in front of me, and I believe, I think you guys, do you have the ones in front of you as well? I'll just start down, and I'll, I'll try to explain what we did and why. First, I make a reference there to remind us as what the Open Meetings Act requires is that the city council meeting agenda. And put there clearly in the rules that all meetings of the city council will have a notice and agenda that complies with the Open and Public Meetings Act. And then, because the Open and Public Meetings Act is silent on this issue, and the state municipal code is silent on this issue, I added in this that an item may be placed on the agenda only by the mayor, city manager, or the request of any two council members. Now, that could be changed any way you want. You could have any procedure under state law that you want on how an item got on the agenda, but you need to have something to avoid disputes, and so everyone knows the I also added that a time by which agenda items must be submitted to the city recorder, this is so that they can prepare it, document it. You guys have chosen at least seven days before the date of the meeting. That's a common time that I see in other places. I also see a common time, 48 hours. You see all sorts of things on this. There's nothing unreasonable about seven days. It's really what this is, is, is convenience for staff so they can prepare the material, get the agendas done, know what's coming, and so that council members who are not as alert as others might be are not surprised by what comes up with last-minute additions and issues. Now, let me just say, the, the limitation on two council members is because under state law, any two council members have the right to call a special meeting if they wanted and create their own agenda. So, it made, it's always made sense to me, if the law allows you to call a meeting by yourself, you might as well have the right to avoid that, and if two council members have an item they want on the agenda that the mayor or manager won't put on the agenda, that they don't have to go through the effort of calling their own meeting to get their matter discussed. Does that make sense? Now, you could have a rule that says any council member can put something on, but what argues against that is then you might have a situation where there is an item that the majority is completely against, that it'll never pass, but the minority continues to just put it on the agenda forever and ever and ever. And that's what we want to avoid, is the minority having more than just their say, but attempting to use the rules to hijack the majority's meetings.
What if an item never successfully makes it to an agenda?
Well, then-
Because I think sometimes in a minority position, which I'm obviously in, to be quite frank, what if an item never makes it to an agenda to be heard by the people? Because I, my feeling on that is that it's important for the people to hear the item and to them, for them to be able to weigh in, but if it never makes it to an agenda...
No, and I-
The repetitiveness, I agree with you, but if it never gets the one time in the goal...
Yeah, you see, I think that's an excellent point and something you need to balance. My response to that is, if there's not at least one other council member who is willing to put it on the meeting, then why put it on? Because it is the council's meeting. It's not the public. You know, the public has a right to come and watch it, and there are other ways to communicate with the public and discuss things with the public other than in the city council meeting, you know, especially with social media nowadays, and you do it. But if a council member doesn't have at least one supporter to have that discussed, then the idea is, you know, how far is it going to go if they can't convince one other? My experience is, by the way, that I've never yet seen a council member who couldn't find at least one other to put it, put a thing on an agenda at least once.
Welcome to Caseville.
Well, no. I think, I think even in Caseville, you'd find at least the one time on an agenda if the mayor would put it on. And, and I think it's especially true when the mayor and city manager also have the right to put things on the agendas.
And that, and that's different than what it's been in the past prior to this rules of procedure. It's, it's been two council members or the mayor.
And not the city manager.
And not the city manager.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I lay out in this, the, although your mayor doesn't need it, but your future mayor may want to know.
Can I, can I just ask a question about that? Because it has yet, not yet happened, but let's say the city manager wants to put something on, and the mayor, whoever he or she is, says, "No, I'm not in favor of putting it on."
Well, under this rule, it goes on, and the mayor's stuck with it.
Good.
See, and that's one of the benefits of, that'd be a situation where the manager thinks something needs to come before the council, either a council member convinced him or staff, or it needs to happen, and you may have a mayor who's trying to filibuster the issue, and the manager's trying to find a way to get it before the council for some official action. Take, for example, I was involved years ago in a city where the mayor was strongly against buying a new fire truck. Majority of the council was in favor. Mayor wasn't going to put it on the agenda. He had to force him to put it on. He's trying to use his position as chair to keep the vote from even happening in hopes of rallying the people in the fire department and minority council eventually. I mean, they forced it to put it on. You could have an issue like that. Manager says, "This needs a decision," and a mayor who knows that the council may be taking a different position from them, saying, "I'm not letting this see the light of day." And you also may have a situation, by the way, I don't ever think a city manager is going to put it on over the objection of a mayor in most cases, but you may have a situation where the mayor's gone, and the city manager needs the authority to put things on.
Could you apply the principles you just conveyed there as to why a manager should be able to? Because you wouldn't want a mayor filibustering or blocking the vote. Couldn't those same principles be applied, though, that if a majority is trying to filibuster and block an item from being voted on? You know, personal-
Let me, let me just say-
Personal conjecture, I don't, I don't care if I put an item on and it wins, loses, or draws. Sometimes it's nice just to have the item out there, especially if it's one that is lobby-
Oh, I, I, I agree with you, when you're in the minority position on a thing, that very often you want to force the other people to vote against it publicly. I'm just saying, we have to balance that. If the majority doesn't want it, if four out of the five don't want it on, and the mayor doesn't want it on, and the manager doesn't want it on, you have to draw a line somewhere. Now, if two people want it on, it gets on. The manager wants it on, the mayor wants it on, it gets on. But if one council member wants it on, or the way this is written, but, but you could write it the other way. There are some of these that have said, "Any council member can request anything on the agenda if you want." Now, for future mayors who haven't had the experience of your current mayor, I included in these policies the role of the mayor as council chair and, and how to do it, so that we don't have to guess, and you can start with, don't have to start fresh with, with each new mayor. We've indicated that the mayor, of course, presides at the council meetings. That's by statute. We've indicate that he can participate, or she can participate in discussion of all matters. There has been some arguments in the past in some groups, because can the chair do more than just chair? We have put in this that he can, that the mayor can discuss, just like any other council member, and debate and have input. We indicate in here that the mayor shall vote as a member only in case of a tire where otherwise specifically authorized to do so by state law, and shall have no power to veto. That's state law, whether you have that in your rules or not. I put this in there so the public would know that, and so that people who are running for mayor would know that, and new mayors would know that without having to search the state law. We indicated that the mayor as the chair has the primary responsibility for ensuring that the council's rules of procedure are followed, and the mayor, the chair, is to make sure that there's, maintains dignity at the council meetings. That means that we're looking for the chair to discipline the other council members, not council members or staff to discipline council members. That's an important thing for decorum and for respect from the public, for things like that, that it is the chair that controls the meetings. We indicate that the, the mayor is to call the meeting to order and confines the discussion to the agenda. We're looking for the mayor to follow the agenda and keep things on track. We indicate that the mayor is to recognize council members for motions and statements, and may allow audience and staff participation at appropriate times. The corollary of that is that if the mayor does not request staff participation in the meeting, or request the public to participate in the meeting, or if it's not a public hearing, then council members shouldn't be inviting the staff or public to talk on something, and staff shouldn't be interrupting and throwing in their two cents' worth without being recognized.
Mr. Church, this is a little bit of a nuanced question, I guess, that you could have so many different permutations of this, but there is, of course, the, the, in the, in these rules, two places where you could, where a council member or a member could-
Yes.
-either do a, a motion to a privilege or, or order. I wouldn't think that, however, I, I just want to make the point, because I think this is an important point, that doesn't mean that a member gets to decide, you know, that matter. It just means that they can raise the point, then the chair makes the decision, or the parliamentarian might weigh in, but it's not really the, the member's role to decide whether they get to make that point of privilege stick or the point of order.
Exactly, and I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that council member, Garn. All of these rules are subject to motions to suspend the rules, you know, there's some other language you used here, and then that individual who makes that motion or raises that point of order, or point of privilege, doesn't get to decide that. If, if they're right under the rules to do something, they can, or if a majority of the council wants to override the chair's ruling and say, "Yes, we want that member of the public to speak on this," they can. And we covered that down before. Remember, these are the rules that the mayors to follow, consistent with the rest of the rules.
Let me just ask a clarifying question, because these rules are more stringent than, you mentioned that, that I've been around for a while, but they are far more stringent than we've operated under in, in the past. And so there are some things, as you mentioned, like calling on staff or calling on the public. If, if council member Lee had a question, as she was discussing, and said, "I have a question for Mr. Thompson, the city engineer," is this, that would, that would never, I would never think twice about that, because I would think that was within her role. These rules seem to suggest that that kind of direct questioning to the city engineer, while this council member Lee has the floor, would be-
The, the rules, the way they're written now, with council member Lee would say, "Chair, I would like your permission to have staff speak on this issue." And then, to, to council member Garn's point, if the chair said, "No, I don't want to hear it," she could say, "I move that under, you know, as we talked about, that we allow them to speak and see if there's a majority of the council that overrides your ruling," which they will. But the idea here is to add formality so that the public thinks that you all like each other, and that you all can get along, and it encourages civility in the meetings, and it also, it moves things along quicker. So, and it discourages people like me who are staff from interrupting and speaking and correcting. So, if council member Lee is making a, a point, and he says, says, "And I believe I'm right on this, am I not, Mr. Church?" Mr. Church should sit, should wait for the, and they should, she should be saying, "I'd like permission for him to speak at this time," and then the chair would say, "Yeah, go ahead," or "No." But we can take these out. Like, let me just say, these are your rules. They can be as formal as you want. The idea here was add formality. You can change them all you want. I'm not even advocating these. I just wrote them.
I've always, I, I guess, you know, one thing that's always stood out to me about you, David, amongst the, your, your innate ability to teach and go through these, is you had some very inspiring things in our last training, and you said, you know, transparency over efficiency, always, and that just burned into my mind, so, you know, I, I, little disheart, I appreciate the comment you just made, too. A little disheartening, perhaps, maybe sometimes our meetings run on, but I really, I take that to heart, and I really like that phrase, you know, and I think it resonates with the people to know that, you know, sometimes there can be a little bit of open debate, so at least they know, see their representatives trying their best, you know, to, to-
Yeah, and this, and, and that's an excellent point, and this, the, the purpose of these rules is to encourage the debate in a polite, civil manner. Now, the code of conduct for city council members and the mayor include, remarks should apply only to the question under debate. We keep it on topic. We should avoid references to personalities and refrain from questioning the motives of others, members and staff, and we demonstrate courtesy and shall not disrupt the meeting. Not use their positions to secure special privileges or gains for yourself or others. And should be dedicated to the effective use of the city's available resources, and then, I'm skipping a couple here that, that aren't relevant to the procedure, but city business shall be discussed in open, well-publicized meetings, except in rare situations in which executive sessions are offered. Now, I didn't, don't mean that to say that you as individuals can't do it. That refers to the council as a group. Individuals, as politicians, as residents, can discuss your city business all you want, but these are rules for the council as a group. And then we've indicated that you comply with the Open and Public Meetings Act. Then we establish, I wrote a, a series of parliamentary rules that would be your rules that, that would apply instead of Robert's Rules of Order. What I tried to do was list the rule, tried to describe the procedure, and then I tried to write a reason behind the rules so that we could understand. As I said, these are just the ones I came up with. There may be others that you'd like. So, if you've adopted these, rule number one of your rules of order is, the meeting is governed by the agenda, and the agenda constitutes the city council's agreed-upon roadmap for the meeting. And then the procedure, I've laid out here in detail how the mayor is to conduct it under the agenda unless you change it. And as you can see, it says, "Each agenda item will be handled by mayor in the following basic format. The mayor, first, the mayor clearly announces the item and shall clearly state what the agenda item is. Second, following the agenda format, the mayor will shall invite the appropriate person or persons to report on the item, including any recommendations they may have. The appropriate person or persons may be the mayor, a member of the city council, a staff person, or an invited person charged with providing input. Third, the mayor would then ask members of the city council if they have any questions about that input." You know, very formal is the idea on this. Fourth, the mayor shall invite public comment if it's a formal public hearing, or if, for whatever reason, you've decided that public comment is what you want on that. So, you get public comment after the presentation and after the council's questions, and then the public comment if you're having that. Fifth, then the mayor invites a motion or suggests a motion. The mayor should announce the name of the member of the city council who makes the motion. That's important for the recording nowadays, is that the mayor say, "Council member Garn has made the motion that." Then the mayor should determine if there is any member of the city council who wishes to second the motion. Now, this is an important formal change. Discussion follows the second. If there is no second, there is no debate among the council or discussion. If two members are not in favor of the motion, the mayor is to move on.
And back to number three, it, it clarifies that question, so not, that's different than debate, technical questions of clarification.
Exactly. What is this about? Why are we here? What's going on? You should have all the information. And then there's a motion. The motion is, "I move we approve ordinance number such and such that authorizes the, the dog catcher to, to pick up all stray animals, you know, that they find in city parks." You know, that's the motion. You may have an ordinance. And before that, you've had all the clarifying information. You've had the introduction, and then someone says, "Is there a second?" And if there's nobody else in support of that motion, then you can move on, if there's no second. After the second, then we have the debate. Most of us debate the things before the second even, or before the motion.
Before the motion. Okay, so that's typically, again, maybe I'm, I can't believe I'm under forwarding, calling myself old school, but maybe I'm old school in that regard, because typically we introduce it, we get a staff report, we start with council discussion, and, and maybe it's just a personal thing, but the very idea of coming to a meeting with an open mind and talking about it before you make up your mind to make a motion, I realize this is what we adopted, but I'm just talking out loud, you know, you, you-
Oh, yeah, we can, we can reverse these-
Hopefully, you come to a meeting with an open, an open mind, and you talk about it, and you say, "You know what? I'm convinced enough that I'm ready to make a motion, but under this rule," and then the item comes before the council, we would, you'd say, "That, thank you for the staff report, Mr. Thompson. Any clarifying questions?" And then, we're not- And then, we're not talking about how anyone feels until someone makes a motion. If someone makes a motion, it doesn't get seconded, then we say, thank you. Item number three.
Yeah, you see, and, but we can change this. This is more similar, very formal, to a legislative process. In that legislative process, there is a bill sponsor. There is a process, but it is written up in advance. The law requires you to have your ordinances written in front of you at the time they're debated, discussed, and voted on. So theoretically, you have a piece of paper in front of you that starts out describing what's going on.
I would just say, on the other hand, after years of running meetings at the NEIC, we do this where we, it never curtails debate at all. You're just seeing, first, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Is it even worth discussing it? Because if you don't have a motion or second, it dies. Then you can have all the discussion and debate you want after that.
Exactly, and once again, that's where we're balancing, keeping the minority from filibustering their way over the objections of majority, keeping the majority from, if there's a, keeping the majority from stomping on the rights of the minority to have their say. So if there's two people on this council that want to proceed with this, then you get to have debate.
Essentially, a four-to-one council, there's a council member sitting there collecting a check every month, correct, under these rules?
Well, theoretically, there won't be a four-to-one council on every issue.
Welcome to Kaysville.
Seventh, if the motion is made, and second, that the mayor should make sure everyone understands the motion. This is done in one of three ways. The mayor can ask the maker of the motion to repeat it. The mayor can repeat the motion. The mayor can ask the city recorder to repeat the motion. Some way like that, so everybody knows. Then, now the mayor invites discussion of the motion. If there is no desired discussion, or after the discussion has ended, the mayor is to call for a vote. If there's discussion, then there is, we have no time limit on this discussion or debate in these rules, the way they're written out. They go on until you're done, or someone makes a motion to call for the question, or to end the debate, and then you vote on that motion to end the debate, and then if that passes, you then vote on the motion.
I thought there was a reference to five minutes.
There was, but I thought you took that out.
I think it's still in there.
Well, maybe we put it in, and it's not in mine.
Are we under these rules in this meeting right now, Chairman?
It's a training work session. I guess we didn't take action to suspend the rules, but it's...
They're voted in. Is it appropriate for Councilmember Page to make a snide remark after my comment and say, oh, brother?
I, I don't know that it's any more inappropriate than, than you asking right now, so I, I, I don't, I don't know.
I guess I don't know when to ask. Maybe that will come up in the train.
Okay, the purpose of the rule, as you saw there, that, as I saw it, was to govern how the mayor chairs the meeting. This is, the purpose of this was to outline what you expect your chair to do. What rules your chair should be enforcing on, on things. Now, rule number two was that any matter that requires formal city decision should be brought before the council by motion. None of these informal sorts of things. So you have something in the record where somebody's moved, seconded, and voted. The procedure for this is that, similar to what we discussed, the purpose of this is, is to limit items under discussion to those and only those the council members want to discuss, to give clarity to what's decided, and make sure everyone taking the, including the person taking the minutes, actually knows and can remember what the ultimate outcome of any discussion and debate was. We have too many issues where the council says, yeah, I think we ought to do that. And then, the recorder doesn't have it, and one council member remembers it, and four or five months later, somebody's saying, hey, I thought we decided to do that. If it requires a decision, we want it in the minutes, with some motion, even if there's no debate or discussion. Rule number three is, we limit ourselves to one matter at a time and one speaker at a time. So you don't start another item until one's finished. You don't talk over each other. This is the rule that requires that the mayor, that no one speaks unless the chair recognizes them. And if the council member wishes to ask a question during their time and retain the floor, they certainly have the right to do that. And if a council member wants to interrupt another speaker, they certainly have the right to request that speaker to allow them to do it. But they don't, the idea of this is to, so that, because we're all recording these now, we want to get rid of that multiple speakers talking over each other, because the tapes have become very important for us. And the only way we get a good recording is one speaker at a time, and we stay on the topic that we're on. Not go back to a former one, or whatever. It makes for a bad record. Rule number four was, the mayor may use general consent, also known as unanimous consent, with all motions, except those motions where votes are used for the purposes of the meeting minutes, and require a roll call of the council. Now, that's not written very well, but what I'm saying here is, there are certain votes that require roll call vote of the council. When you pass an ordinance, when you incurred a liability, when you pass a resolution, when you approve a contract. Those require roll call votes. All other motions and seconds besides those, if the mayor can see that there is unanimous consent or a majority of the council, the mayor has the right to say, if there's no objection to this motion, we're moving on. Is there an objection? If somebody objects, then there's a vote. These are meant to be, to take care of things like, I move we adjourn for ten minutes. I need to go out in the hall. I move we take a break. I've got to make a phone call. The mayor has the right to just say, do we have unanimous consent for that, and do it, and move on. You cannot use this rule, though, for some ordinance, some passage, something like that. And if any member objects, then it's got to be put on, considered just like any other motion, seconded, debated, voted on. Rule five is, that I put in because, for those who love their parliamentary procedure, this is to indicate that, look, we're going to be formal. We're going to have motions. We might have motions to amend the motions. We might have a motion for a substitute motion. But we're limiting it in Kaysville to three motions. We're not having a motion to amend the substitute motion, because we can't keep track of that. So in theory, you might have a motion, you know, I move that we approve ordinance number six, rezoning the property on Seventh South. And somebody's, and it's seconded, and you're discussing, and someone gets the attention, Sharon says, I move we amend the previous motion to limit that to only the first ten acres. And someone seconds that amended motion, you know, amend the ordinance. And then somebody might say, I have a substitute motion. I move that we table this and send it to the planning commission. The idea is, that's the third motion. We'll now take those motions, if there's a second to that third, in reverse order, and vote on the substitute motion. Does it get referred to the planning commission? If it does, you're done. We then go to the amended motion. Do we amend the ordinance to take off the property ten acres? If that passes, that now is what's being debated. If that doesn't pass, you're back to the original one. But we've written this rule to say, we're not going to allow people, if, let's say, to have a series of motions after motion after motion, amending the motion, substituting the motion. The chair has to limit it to the third one before you start narrowing them down to nothing. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just going to mention that we are still in our 6:00 PM open law and Rules of Procedure training. It's seven PM, but we will wrap up, we'll finish going through these items. Just for those who are joining us, the seven PM meeting has not yet been convened.
You're easy on the ears, David, so... Time flies.
Okay, now, and I kind of conflated rule five and rule six together. We're allowing only three basic forms of motions, the initial motions, motions to amend, and substitute motions on the bill. And as you see on rule six, there can be up to three motions on the floor at the same time, but no more than three. We're not going to have an amendment to the substitute or any like that. Now, rule seven is, discussion or debate can continue as long as the members of the council wish to discuss an item, subject to the mayor determining that it's time to move on and take an action to the council. Now, you have indicated to me that perhaps you adopted one with five minutes in it.
Yeah, rule number seven reads, the discussion or debate on each individual agenda item will be limited to five minutes per council member. Other than council member reports, which should be limited to three minutes per council member, unless the council by majority vote agrees to extend the time of any member. The following motions are not debatable, a motion to adjourn, a motion to recess, a motion to fix a time to adjourn, a motion to table, and a motion to limit debate.
Yeah, and I do remember you asked me to edit that, and I don't know why that's not in my copy now. So you're limiting your debate to five, your discussion to five members' minutes per council member per item, unless you vote to extend the time of a council member. Five minutes per council member per item would still be, if you count the mayor as part of the council, is going to be thirty minutes on each item, which is a long time, but it may not be long enough for some issues. And so you may want to suspend the rules on some things and move on.
You have some software we can buy for that, Shane, to track all that?
Well, there's a clock.
It's not working. Thirty seconds here, minute there.
Okay, rule eight, three yes votes are required to pass any item before the council with limited exceptions. Those exceptions are the ones in state law. Let me tell you, the change on this from state law, the clarification on this is, as you know, your quorum is three. Your minimum yes votes is three. The issue comes up, if you've got two vote yes, two vote no, and one person is present but says, I abstain, does that create a tie for purposes of the mayor to vote? The way I wrote the rule is, we treat the abstention as if they're voting no and not allowing the mayor to vote. If there's an absence, it's two to two, the mayor can vote. But if someone says, I want to see where the mayor stands on this. I'm refusing to vote. We're treating that like they voted no. Because all that matters in the law is the number of yes votes. You need three yes votes to pass anything. Rule nine was, deals with the motions to reconsider. Under state law, you can, motions to reconsider are limited. This recites the limitations in state law, but it also clarifies that, one of the things that some people had problems on, a motion to reconsider is not a motion to amend, or it's not a motion to repeal. It's a motion to reconsider the exact item that you discussed, that you did before. So if an item passes or fails, and you want to reconsider the exact item, you need to either do it at the same meeting, or do it at the very next meeting, and have a motion by someone who voted in the minority bring the motion to reconsider. Someone has to have changed their mind.
You said in the minority, did you mean in the majority?
Majority, that's what I mean. Sorry. And that makes sense for...
Because otherwise you have an endless loop, right?
You have an endless loop, otherwise. Okay, and rule number ten, the mayor and council members shall adhere to the Code of Conduct, which we talked about before, speaking nicely about each other, not personalizing it, speaking through the chair, not being rude to the public, not being rude to the staff, keeping things on a high level, those kind of things.
Does that one include, is that just here on the dais, or is that in other public forums, say, social?
This is rules for running your council meetings. I would hope that the civility extends throughout all of your daily contact and conduct with everybody. But these are just your parliamentary rules and procedures. You have any specific questions on them? I'm sorry, it took so long.
Oh, that's great.
As I say, they're your rules. You can change them all you want. You can become more formal. You can become less formal. It's, my experience is that all of us have, in every city, have their kind of traditions and customs for running a meeting that we pass down. And it is very difficult on the mayors and chairs to change those traditions and customs. So if you want to become more formal and follow these rules, you want to be of great assistance to your mayor and, your mayor in chairing the meeting to help them do it. Because it's easy to just fall back into a kind of an informal, custom kind of thing. And then if you do that, and then someone says, I want to enforce the rules right now, because I don't like the way this guy's talking. That makes it really hard. You follow the rules in all the respects, or you ignore them. You don't pick and choose which ones you want to have, because you get to pick and choose the rules. So if you want more formal rules, you need to assist your mayor, and you need to assist and insist that your chair, chair of the meeting, in accordance with the rules you adopt. If you don't want to be formal, then adopt less formal rules.
You asked for a question, just one quick one. I mean, a comment question, equal distribution of those rules, too. I would hope goes without saying. And then, a quick question, though, in the end of that, we didn't go over. There is a line in there that talks about how council members are now currently restrained from going to that microphone during the call, during the call to the public section. I've, quickly, I've had conversations with the state ombudsman, and she very explicitly said, there's times when you're a council member, and there's times when you're a citizen, and you're both still. I have done so before. I have gone down there in the call to the public situation, and it wasn't very well-liked. Which, that's okay. I understand that. But it, my question is, do you see that as the norm across the state of Utah, councillor? Because I was told it's perfectly okay to do.
Yes, I mean, there's nothing illegal about it. There's nothing wrong with it.
Well, norm to do it. So you see it as the norm for, it's okay, or is it outlawed in every city?
It's not the norm to do it. Most, most council members, unless, unless it is an item that they are, have recused themselves on because it's their own business, and the item's on the agenda, most council members do not speak as a member of the public from the dais. They give the public time. But for example, let's say that you've got an application to rezone property that you own. You're not gonna, you're going to recuse yourself from voting on that at the council. But as the property owner, you might be involved from the dais. But just on general things, you've got that public time for the public to speak, council members ought to leave that time to the public.
And then one clarifying question that Councilmember Raddens began to ask, that maybe I just wanted to clarify as well. We've talked about the Rules of Procedure and Rules of Order as they relate to meetings, but in personal contact between council members, and what role does the chair play in that, in ensuring that they're getting along away from City Hall?
Well, the chair doesn't play any role. As the mayor and friend of other people, you might want to intervene and talk. But it's not a rule, a role of a chair particularly, but, you know, it's a human, we're all friends. We like each other. When you see two friends who are, might be getting a little crosswise with each other, it's just a human-friendly thing to do, is to try to help out. But there's nothing that requires the chair to do it, or the mayor to do it, or prohibits them from doing it. But it's not a role of the chair of a meeting. And this, the reason why I say that is this, is as a council, we run the meeting, and we have rules as a council. You are also individuals, as Dave pointed out. You're citizens, you're politicians, you're things. Being elected to an office doesn't give the mayor the right to control somebody in their individual capacity or their neighborhood capacity, or chair that. So when you say, as a chair, what is my role in that? As a friend and as a neighbor, you might want to counsel people to please get along. As the mayor, you want, might want to advise them, but it's not part of your duty as chair of the meeting under these rules, if that makes sense.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Church, thank you very much for your time here today. We are now concluding our 6:00 PM city council member training. Our regular city council meeting is, was scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM. We're going to take a brief recess. It is 7:12, well, 7:12 by that clock, 7:10 by my iPad, and I can't see that one, but 1:30 on that clock. But we'll go off of this one, and we'll reconvene in eight minutes.